You're in the hot seat today, huh? The what? The guru, huh?
Thought y'all was going last.
That clock has stopped.
It's true.
They battery.
All right. Kenny, would you get the door for us? Thank you. All right, I'm gonna call this order, this meeting to order at ten thirty AM on Wednesday, April the tenth. And we do have a forum, all commissioners and myself are present. Are there any public comments? No, no comments. All right, we'll move on to item number three, discuss abatement orders. And this was upon a request from our fire marshal, Sean Davis. So you have the floor, sir.
Good morning.
Okay, good morning, Sean.
Uh, I put forward a couple of pieces of paper, the top one. That is what we had up till recently, we've been doing is our first step for when there is an abatement issue. The residents gets that notice either placed on their door or their mailbox to contact us within seventy-two hours. To do that, and then let me back up for those who haven't put it in the face, this is Adrian Boggs, he's the newest hired uh, deputy fire marshal in the office. The other two forms are concerning are subject contracts. The first one on top of there is kind of a friendly nudge letter saying, hey, probably don't know this, but your subject contract expires with the county, and please get it renewed. We usually get about fifty percent response out of that on them, they know, and then they, they take care of it, getting their contractor to renew it, or they get them certified in class, they can do it themselves and all that. Then the next one is a little bit stiffer, kind of saying, hey, we're not playing, get it done or else. And those are sent, we usually give a day, and the person sent out after their six days expire. So they, you know, we give them two months after the expiration to get that done. That being said, when Ashley was hired in, she knew right off the bat, she's hired in for abatement. You know, fire unit investigations too, and inspections and things like that, but we wanted her to tackle abatement. And I asked her to come up with something that will help get the county cleaned up. So I'd like her to be able to explain the process she's created and what she's working through right now, and then let y'all kind of know, and then give us a response. If we still want to stick with just issuing the citation, don't, don't do it the way she's been doing it, or, or what?
Thanks for being here, Sean. So I'm back on October, and as we know, there's a lot of abatement issues within the county, some of them going on for a very, very long time. I wasn't left with many records, so I kind of started fresh. Can we keep up with what you have before you get to the urgent notice? It's worked in quite a few other agencies and counties that I've worked in, kind of brings the attention, bright orange, place it on our doorway. I have zip code, I have tape, I will put it wherever they're gonna see it. Mailboxes work great. So far, since using these notices, I, I'm keeping a spreadsheet of all of my abatements that I go out on, which up until recently was just complaints that were coming in from neighbors, and then if I was in the neighborhood and saw another violation, I replaced those notices on those houses. So far, I'm getting a response on these notices being placed within about three hours. I put them on mailboxes, and I'm getting the call because they're scared to death. They just got a warrant, we pay for those notice on their mailbox, it says environmental issue, and they're like, I want it cleaned up. What do I do? Compliance on these right now is about eighty-nine percent. I'm getting work. People are cleaning properties up, they're calling me, the ones that are on, because we obviously have some properties that are really messy. As long as they're checking in with me on a weekly basis, I'm withholding citations. I'm getting calls every week. They're calling me saying, I hauled a mattress off, I did this, I did this. As well as about every two weeks, because of when my schedule allows, I'm driving by the properties and verifying this stuff is leaving, and it is. So we're seeing, we're seeing a good reaction on this. Now, the other day, complaints came in, and I went and wrote citations. They went out in the mail today for those violations. So I guess we'll see how that reaction is. They did not get notices placed. Both properties sound like they have been an ongoing problem, and there is no residents living at those addresses. So we took the citation route with those to see how that goes. But that's kind of how I've been running things. Like I said, so far, I can tell you about eighty-nine percent compliance of people trying to work with me, and I'm working with them, always with that citation being held over their head as the risk if they don't continue to clean. But for people to kind of put it down on the citizen, they get their responsibility, and they are following through, and they are staying in contact with me.
That would get to your attention.
So, uh, who do you send the citations to?
The property owner.
Property owner, okay. And, uh,
Which can be a challenge, because finding out there's a lot of landlords, and it's the renters that are the problem. So technically, it's not, it is on the property owner, but they're not the one causing the mess, and they're trying to get it cleaned up the best way they know how, through their legal action. But renters and things like that have a lot more rights. So the last one actually yesterday that I went out on, she's complaining, she said, I've been trying to get it cleaned up for years. And I said, well, would you like me to put a notice on the door, or would you like a citation issued? He said, issue a citation, because they've been told, and told, and told, and that was for the landlord.
But if you,
To the renter.
If you enter a citation, it goes to the renter, not the property owner, right?
Technically, the property owner is responsible for the law, because they own that property. So anything that happens on that property is their responsibility. But in this case, he was able to provide all the information of the renter, so I was able to issue a citation to the renter. But if I go via the pad, it's gonna be the property owner. That'd be nice.
Is that Mr. Etheridge?
Yes, sir.
So, and what do they do? The citations have a cost?
Uh, yes, they're via, that's up to the JP to assign a fine, per se. And, and per, so right now, citations are being issued, how I'm issuing my citations is they're getting an illegal dumping, that's a classy violation, which is like traffic ticket. So that, just so you understand, that's less than five pounds. That's what that means, is a classy of illegal dumping is less than five pounds, so that's like a five gallon bucket. And they're also receiving a public nuisance charge, which is a thirty day to abate. And after that, those charges can go up from anywhere from a block fee to a state development. And the problem is most of our properties right now are state development.
I'll make a comment, this from Keith Pearson, not the court. Hey, it's your job, you handle it the way you see fit. I understand that Kaufman County has a very successful program over there. And I understand that, from everywhere, I told that you were very successful in Kaufman County. So I'm not gonna, I mean personally, I'm not gonna micromanage you. Everything's different, Sean. As long as somebody's actively working on it, when I get somebody complain, somebody's complaining to me, I say, we've got an active abatement officer working on things. That's all they want to hear, and so thank you.
So if we run across a property that we need looked at, just email or call, what, what is the most efficient way to contact you?
Uh, email works, especially if I can have an ad, address is big. If I get an address um, for a vicinity, I know, like, I didn't receive one around Fisher the other day, and it was kind of the point of where the property was, I had to go out and get the address off the mailbox, found out there's no house there, so and then I kind of do my research through the pad, try and find it before I go out there, because you can usually find them on the guide site. But yes, email's best, that way I have kind of a paper trail of the complaints.
Because you could be full-time in Merle Springs and rolling up.
Well, in the twenty-seven hundreds too, that's, that place you looked at it, twenty-seven oh eight, it's out of control. I mean, there's, but anyway, you know, if you have a, want to do a thirty-day cleanup deal, I don't have a problem with that. But if you go back and they're not in compliance, then, you know, I think we gotta do something.
Okay.
You know, but I understand that, I, I said, I think in my email, that the one right here on one ninety-eight had been convicted before in JP Court, so, you know, he has a problem.
So clarify, Katie, do you want citations issued, or do you want a case file? Like, if it's like one on twenty-seven oh eight, that's a state development charge. That's not a classy thing.
Well, I think if he doesn't show any kind of improvement, then I think you gotta do what you gotta do.
Isn't, isn't that a progression deal? You issue a citation first, and then if you don't get a response, then you issue a case?
Yes, sir. So how the public nuisance charge works is it will, after the thirty-day abatement, and this is again, one of the issues I'm having is I'm not hearing back from my JP's to know if those tickets are paid, if they're dismissed, or whatnot, because that can mess up me filing further charges. So that's a communication thing that will have to be worked out with our JP's. But after that thirty days, they can actually, that's when the charge goes up, to whatever is their weight per the state law. So I can go with off whatever, you know, spelled, and I'll talk with our DA about that as well, and find out how we wanna structure those cases, but to not know, like, I have issued citations, and I have not heard back, and I'm actually past that thirty days, and nothing has been done on the property, but I haven't heard whether the ticket was paid or, or not. So I'm kind of stuck in the water on what to do next, on that, on that end of things, so. But for the most part, everything is being compliant, but that's one of the things I'll pass along, that I talk to a lot of these people, they are asking if there is a place in McCounty for them to be able to take mattresses, and some of the bigger appliances and things like that, and the best I can tell them is Dallas, we either.
Three of the four precincts have collections in certain hours. I mean, they're gonna be charged, I mean, we have a fee.
And that's what's gonna be the problem, is they're gonna pull up, and they're gonna be assessed and say, well, you know, we got fifty-five dollars, and we can dump that here. They're gonna, well, I don't have that, there's a league with it, and then Free County rolls down the way, they're pulling over and dumping, and now you're coming to pick it up for you. And there's, you know, no sweat off their back, and it's a refrigerator, or a mattress, or some piece of furniture that they didn't write their name on.
Well, with exception of, of the nineteenth and twentieth of this month, you, you can bring anything you got free.
Yeah.
Mattresses, refrigerators, tires.
Right.
Well, yeah, that's, that's.
And I'm gonna mine this weekend.
Not, you know.
And they're doing one this weekend, so they, they don't have much of a, right now, they don't have, at least one time a year, they don't have much of an excuse, they don't want to have the money.
And you know, we don't charge ten bucks maybe, or five bucks to, to bring in a mattress is reasonable.
More than that, is I took one myself, and it was fifty dollars.
I did my one?
It's free.
Oh, okay, well, mattress wise? My, 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 not that.
I have no idea what you're talking, but if you get the mattress by itself, or?
It was a mattress in the bed room. And it's, I paid a few folks to take it off the trailer and go.
Yes, sir.
She made a remark about she's not getting that information back from the ju- justice courts on her citation, whether it's been issued. Does she not have access to the disposition of that citation and the JP courts, you know, they gotta have a disposition on the, the citation issue, you know, JP court, they gotta have it on computers.
I don't know how, how they're, we don't have the access to.
That, that's the thing, they just don't stop data. We don't, we don't know unless they, some heard a court, you know, because they requested a trial or something, and, and all that. We really don't know whether they paid the fine, or the judge, you know, ordered something to be done, I mean, and that's the other thing. In court, and the judge orders, yeah, you got sixty days to clean this mess up. Well, who's tracking that? Whose job is it to follow up and make sure in sixty days, that's taken care of?
Yeah, they should have access to that, I think, really all.
And that's something that we need to talk to the JPs about too, about what they can do to help us, because we're, we're getting overrun. I mean, if we don't crack down now, we're in trouble.
Sure, and it could be just, there are hurdles in the way that are
Right.
frustrating, it's, it makes it hard to do the job, and then you got, she's been working with Jeff around Merle Springs and stuff and things. But if we start doing it one way, you know, Jeff being an elected official can make up his mind that he's gonna do it this way, yesterday, he told him, yeah, you know, get it cleaned up, I'll check back with you in two weeks. When she shows up, it's like, no, state development, and well, yesterday, the constable just opened it, just cleaned it. I mean, you know, we're not, we gotta somehow get on the same page with this, where we're going, county vibe with the abatement. Kind of all on the same direction. I think Keith said, we, you know, you can give them a little sap on the hand, that's gonna happen, but you put the hammer down on them, they'll get it cleaned up. And I think that's what we gotta do. And then y'all need to know. And then a lot of, they go to tell them, clean it up, and their idea is to clean it up, so they don't want to make a big problem, set it on fire. And then rather, the next day, writing a ticket for it, it's burning, and so it's just, you know, that doesn't help the situation either, and.
I feel like too, if we had it more readily known, where they can take their things in the precincts and the hours, maybe a flyer being handed out when I go out there, because that's the first question I get, is where can I take it and when? That would be helpful, or have it on the county website, where I can send it to the website and say, get it under this area, it will tell you your precinct, when you can take it. Maybe they have keys on there already, so people already know what they're kind of getting into. Because, you know, that, that's, that's been the biggest feedback, is just where do I take all this stuff? That has, and a lot of people have inherited properties that have this on there, and they're trying to clean it up, but unlimited incomes and they're elderly, or maybe they don't have the truck to get it there, so there's a lot of loss involved on their part of trying to do the right thing. So, I mean, I'm, I'm getting compliance, people want to make a difference, and they want to clean up, but we don't really have a good avenue right now for that to happen easily. So.
Why don't we schedule another workshop real, real soon, Andy, with the JP's, the constables, and y'all, let's all try to get on the same page.
Okay.
What, how did you normally say that, one of my crew employees finds trash that's dumped on the side of the road, and we go through and find the receipt, or something like that, and we take a picture of it and send it to you, what, how do you handle that?
So that can be kind of tricky, so I've had quite a few of those where mail and stuff is found in the packages, and if I can, I would go to the house and find out. Number one, I'll confront them, and I'll tell you, the majority of those calls have been filled off the trash truck. So I have gone to two trash companies that are hauling in like landscape trailers, and they stack it really, really tall, and there are like Amazon boxes that blow off, or a piece of mail, a trash bag that comes off on a county road. And they have been warned that if this continues to happen, then I will go after them as a commercial company. But majority of those calls are not on the, it's actually coming off trash trucks. It's stacked, it's so tall.
The ones that were, obviously, you know, they took a, a bunch of household trash and just ran through and debris, or whatever, one off a trash, but they just.
Yeah.
Those are, there's no
Yeah.
evidence there, there's no go pick it up, please, or anything, it's, we're gonna go straight to enforcement, whether it's
That's what I said.
or, you know, B or A, or state development charge, whatever warrants that off, it's at that time, that's gonna get brought in.
Yeah.
And that's, that is a blaming disrespect, and
Yes.
right, or the law. But a lot of them aren't.
Yeah, there, I've gone and talked to about six people, and they have a trash can right there with trash, and it's extremely apologetic, and gone out and picked up the trash that was there. I was able to reason how to go out and get it, because, you know, it's, it's usually pretty noticeable, if it's like two kind of rivers over, you know, kind of weird spot to go dump your trash, or it's, you know, down across the county, and it's like, why would we drive all the way down there to dump an Amazon box? So. But yes, if I find out they did dump it yet, there will be citations issued, or charges issued.
Okay. So, and we, we haven't answered any questions, but you have communicated to us what the current process is, right? So we just need to meet on the same page, but one, one of the things that we need to do is put together the information of one sheet flyer on all the collection stations at the different precincts, when the hours of operation are, and if possible, the, their charges.
That would be fantastic.
Okay, we can do that. Okay, anything else?
So, just so we're clear right now, we can continue with the notice and.
The thirty-day, the thirty, the thirty-day noting?
Yes, sir. I was saying, I mean, because a lot of them are, just like I said, she gives them the notice, and you've got a problem here, they did that orange paper, and you, I mean, this much time to get it picked up, and they communicate with, but the minute they go communicate, or they stop complaining, then there's no now, okay, we're taking.
I guess you don't give them thirty days to communicate with you, do you?
No, they have seventy-two hours.
Yeah, okay.
And they're following, but they're sad, I think, well, I have to wait hours.
So, that's right, I mean, yeah.
They're waiting, I mean, it takes a period of time.
Okay.
We, we felt like that way was more giving the person a chance to say, let's get this fixed. A lot of them, you know, they, they know there's junk out there, but they didn't realize it's such a problem, maybe, or that they're noticed at least, and now that they know they're on the grid, they're gonna tend to take it, because we're gonna have the people, like you said, a few of them, just are trash dumping people, and we really, to effectively really get something done, we need to build a case against it, not just write a ticket and like pay it, or dismiss it, or whatever, on a classy thing, that's really not helping us to build a case the way we should to get through a good charge, it's gonna actually make something happen. You know, and, and those kind of folks, they, they're, they're your average, you know, criminals that just disobey the law just because they don't want to follow anything, and you're not gonna tell me how to do it, and that's where we took the paperwork, and all they showed them, they're gonna cooperate, so. But, but a lot of citizens are willing just to clean up, you know, and give them a chance, and, and I think that's what we're trying to do with the notice there.
Yeah, the, the people that are, out there on twenty-seven oh eight, they have enough junk iron to pile hundred, don't tell how much all that's worth out there, if they'd sell some of that, those old vehicles and, and.
And she run into another, uh, few issues where there's mental issues going on with the occupants of the property, where they're just orders and ordering, they just, you know, they're just not, they don't work, they don't, you know, they just run around and collect junk and bring it back, and for whatever, I mean, they're just picking up stuff, and and it just makes a mess, and it, it's not getting through to them that can't just keep doing this, you know? So that, that was where we need to get the court involved to go get that, get that one.
Right.
Okay. All right, so we'll schedule another workshop with the, I don't know if we need to have both JP's and constables there at the same time, or do it separately. Because the JP's are the ones that determine what the fine is gonna be, correct? The constables are the ones that, are the ones that enforce it, correct?
Correct. Their suppositions is, yeah, just.
Yeah, okay.
I get them all together at one time. We got, we got three constables that are actively working abating. Everybody, I would give you.
All together, okay. So working on that. Anything else?
Thank you, Sean.
Deserved.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I remember too, discuss administrative time. But we came, came, we've learned a lot in the last year, when we adjusted the administrative time from eighty hours a year to twenty hours a year, and come to find out that elected officials have the ability to pay administrative time at will, anytime they want, for any reason. And so that pretty much kind of eliminated our administrative time policy, except for the twenty-three people that do not report directly to a elected official, but to a to the commission, basically, I guess, Commissioner's Court. And so, you know, I ran in a situation this, uh, on Monday, because I had one in, individual that their entire building was gonna be empty except for them, and I didn't want to leave her there, so I told her she could take time off. She, she could, we would close her office for the day, because I didn't want her being there all by herself. And so that, that puts it down to, yes, she probably has time available in the administrative time policy, but once she gets up to twenty, she can't take anymore. And I really think it would, it's unfair to these twenty-three people that they don't have the same benefit of having an elected official to make a decision for them in, in that regard, and there's not time for them to come before the Commissioner's Court in a lot of cases, and you know, again, I'm, I'm gonna propose a resolution that would state that any county employee or public, yeah, county employee that's not directly tied to a to an elected official would be tied to the county judge, and that way, they can be, fall under these same policies. Most of all of these report to me anyway. Okay, we've got, here's the twenty-three people that, that currently do not have an elected official that they report to. Public buildings, we have three, IT, we have three, AgriLife, we have three, Fire Marshal, we have four, is that correct? The library, we have three, Human Resources has two, Commissioner's Court has two, DPS has one, Emergency Management has one, Veterans Affairs has one, Indigenous Healthcare has one. And as, as you know, the majority of these, I work with regularly on, on, with them in, in any case, so. You know.
Commissioner's Court has two.
Yes, that's what I said. Keegan and Lisa?
Keegan works for us.
Works for us.
And she, she works for us.
She doesn't work for a specific elected official?
Well.
You're saying she's got four bosses for people?
Normally, we make, we all agree.
She does have four bosses.
Yeah. We all agree what, what she can do, if she wants to take off, she normally emails all of us, or texts all of us, and we say, yeah or nay. And if Moore says yay, then nay, then she takes off.
And that's efficient for y'all?
It's very efficient.
Okay.
You say the DPS.
We provide a secretary for the DPS office. She's an employee of the county.
You know, we can't, I don't, I don't have a problem that, these, the ones you mentioned, outside of our employees and commissioners and players, I don't have a problem with them reporting to you, but they are hired by the Commissioner's Court, and Commissioner's Court oversees their operations, but as far as reporting to you, I, I don't really have a problem with that.
I don't think our secretary should, they just stay with us.
No, they, they, they're, they're our employees.
Well, it's a shame, this county, the half this county was shut down on Monday. And the, the, the elected officials that did that, the only ones that can answer to them is the voters.
And that's exactly what the Attorney General opinion states.
That's right.
The motors?
This court had let half the, more than half the people of this county off on Monday, those individual elected officials did that. And if they get an opponent, it'd be brought out, but we can't worry about it. But as far as appointing those people directly under you or me or anybody else, one person, I'm not part of. Because like I said before, if all of a sudden I don't like Sean, Sean, you're gone, and I'll hire a new fire marshal, and you four guys will have nothing to do with it. And that's not, that's not the way it should go, same way with Scott, I don't like Scott, bye Scott. And y'all family will say so, and that's why they entered this, they're hired and fired by this court, not by one individual. If you wanna put one, a member of this court, their direct supervisor, that guy, I'm with Virgil, I don't have no problem with it. But you won't have hiring and firing discrepancy.
No. Let me ask, uh, uh, Jessica, what, what about essential employees, do they fall under the same rule? Yeah, essential, yeah, we have, we have essential employees, our men, and we, uh, our people are essential, they had if they have a tornado, they don't get to take off when they have a free, when the courthouse closes, they don't get to take off. That's right, Sheriff's Department, so.
So they, they sign a form that there is. They're aware of that.
Pretty sure the eclipse didn't require an essential employee thing, I don't think that right. Last year, by no means, you know, all my guys worked.
My guys did too, I mean, you know, they're, oh, no, we, 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 we worked just like Sheriff's Department.
I had two employees take off, but they took, they took their.
Yeah.
And what? We have a liaison program for these different departments to come to, so they have someone they can speak to, is that not working?
But, but just, yeah, I think, I think the liaison works just to talk it out and see what, what need, before you go to the full court.
Right.
And, and then, if you can't work it out with your liaison people, then they need to come to them. But as far as just somebody being kind of, uh, established to report to, I, I, I don't have a problem with, with, with those reporting, uh, to you, Judge, although, you know, you can't fire them or anything like that. Uh, but, but I don't have a problem with them reporting to.
Okay, well, yeah, the main thing that I'm looking at is for administrative time, rather, rather than have a separate policy for twenty-three people or, uh, whatever, the, and, and set up, uh, uh, it's, it's a pain for the, uh, uh, payroll people to keep track of it, and it's pain for the in, in, individual employees to keep track of it, is just for the purpose of administrative time that they would report to county judge, that would be an elected official, and then, then, okay. So if I do a resolution that kind of narrows that, that concept, y'all will be.
If you want to have control of the cabinet time, uh, judges, that's fine with me, but remember, it's gonna come by, if you let the rest of them twenty-three employees off, it's gonna come out of campaign time, so if you want, if you want that on your shoulders, that's fine.
Okay, it's twenty-one, not twenty-two.
Twenty-one.
I would like to bring up that there are three court coordinators in this courthouse, me being one of them, the other two were gone off, and I would guarantee that they get administrative leave, but I came, I have to be here, I didn't have that option. And I asked if I could leave, I have to guarantee personal time the last half of the day. It's, I'm not asking for special treatment, I'm just asking for the same treatment that the other two exact office positions are getting. Except when I went to back Christmas, the entire courthouse was gone, I was the only employee left with security up here. House of power, power link word. Nobody else was here, but I didn't get that in the.
And unfortunately, we can't address it. That, that's, that's that elected official's.
Protagonist.
To, to, yeah, rather certainly not a privilege, but they, they use it as a privilege, and we can't address it.
It's a privilege that our employees who are getting to say.
Oh, it does cause controversy in the whole courthouse.
But the law is very clear that that elected official makes a decision, not this Commissioner's Court.
Right.
We worked a budget, that's about it.
As far as the people that work directly for the court, you know, say over that, and we have administrative time policy in place that those department could work on it, does it clarify what you can and can't use administrative time for? Even all the.
What goes to elected officials, there's no such thing as administrative time, they do what they want, elected official can.
Yeah, well, we need, we need something for payroll coding purposes, so that, that's what why we call it administrative time. They got, payroll's gotta code it to something. All right, well, I will, I will work together a resolution and, uh, see if it, uh, and, and review it with you guys, see if you can do it, all right. Uh, next item on the agenda is discuss road and bridge bid tabulation.
I'm gonna give y'all, uh, switch the tabulations for last year, and then there's a sheet for the over
Thank you. Thank you, appreciate it.
We're prepared.
I think we called this maybe mainly with the bill, a lot of new vendors this year, uh, that did bid, which is good for the counties. Uh, and some of the new vendor, or actually some of the low vendors, so I wanted to bring your attention for that. And hold that muscle work on it, so. Take off. I guess we're just gonna go through each style, because I don't have a long, I'll stand up a little bit each one. But y'all gonna start with fuel?
With what?
On the fuel.
Fuel, okay.
In your, in your book, first tell me your business.
You said the fact to go by the market price, people don't have a. So it's like often petroleum has the lowest market price on everything. Other than, uh, the, the. Double Montella.
Have those situation things.
Yes, they had, you had to ask, you had to order a thousand gallons. So, you know, you can't guarantee that. The thousand gallons would become some, some of which was, it was qualified anywhere straight up in Waltons. And that was based on a thousand deliveries, so the double Montella actually. Double Montella. That double Montella is, um, you know. Do y'all, y'all don't usually get a super on letter that often deal?
No.
But they actually have the lowest market on the super on letter, but they don't have the lowest market on the regular. And then they don't have the lowest market on YouTube. But this part of the often petroleum, often petroleum with that point, uh, when, is it wrong?
Why does the market matter? Should it just matter with total prices?
Your, your, the price fluctuates to the year, they base the market while invoicing that. If they buy, they're, they're.
Oh, so like the two thirty-four, I'm looking at often, it's just with the DUCO, it says two forty-eight point nine a gallon. That's a wholesale price.
So they marked that point zero seven five, but that wholesale price can fluctuate.
Wholesale product, that's not a, that's not a, uh, constant price throughout the year?
Daily price.
I'm gonna question later if it comes to call this.
We get, uh, in precinct three, we get non-ethanol fuel, that's all we get, ethanol, in ethanol free.
So often we'll have that on two. So I feel like they have it, which, you know, we're not good for non-ethanol, some of them submit it, some of them don't, we don't actually have them in our good. We want y'all to understand that, you know, you won't be eating this kind of like. We'll have to go.
Yeah, uh, we're gonna have to put with often petroleum, it sounds like they've given us the best bid.
So we had to look at that market price, not the.
Where are they located at?
Around Sherman, Texas.
God, oh, which county is it?
They do have, um, they put a cover sheet and I highlighted some of the things that they serve on their cover sheet, but the letter they sent when they're good. You'll see that I kind of highlighted on each one, it's of their technical location.
Where's their nearest location?
It looks like it's in Sherman.
You know, several years ago, we, uh, DUCO got outbid, I can't remember who it was, but it was, it was somebody in Tyler, and we went with them, and, boy, we started needing gas, they couldn't get it, they couldn't, they couldn't deliver well, you'll have to make an appointment to deal, deliver this stuff, the problem is, can you get gas when you need gas, and you get fuel when you need fuel? That's, that's the deal, now, if they're gonna be in Sherman, if we need some, uh, uh, fuel uh, in two days, are they gonna be able to deliver it in two days, or what, what's your delivery schedule?
I would think they'd eat up their margins in delivery, and, and the fuel, the, the, the gas.
You know, we had to go back and, and, and the one that we had give the bid to out of Tyler, we had had canceled him, because I couldn't.
If you're, if you don't wanna, uh, bid to the low bidder, you can bring often, we can request that often be here in court on April twenty-four, often and at about.
Yeah.
And you can ask your questions to often.
Yeah, I mean.
You're not going to war.
Well, I think we need some questions from them, I, I think we need to see what their schedule, when they gonna be, will they bring fuel overnight? Wha- what hours are they gonna be, be able to bring fuel?
Can we, can we have something like a writing, Virgil's saying, hey, we will deliver within three days of when we order.
Finally, you should have been putting in the bid like that.
Okay.
Should have been in your bid. When I send those out, you know, for y'all to review each time before I actually send them to the public, that's what we're asking for, really, it's for any changes like that, all only to the attorney, any of those groups. Or if you want, you know, more certification, I think you've added a new product as you're Chad added a different option, you can have the recycle asphalt stuff, so things like that, you know, we, I don't know much type of bill they do. I mean, I don't know the details, I don't, I've learned a lot, but I still don't know what y'all, you know, where y'all get stuff from, I'm looking at. So that's something that we would definitely add in the future, if y'all want a two-day delivery added on the, you know, the gas and fuels. And we don't do it proposed, so I can't reach out from these individuals. And it's a bid, you can't. You can't have communication.
Do we have to have, do we have to have all of them, or just the ones that?
The ones you're considering.
Well, then I thought we'd do that, so, so we can ask them both what their delivery schedule is.
Yeah, I think so, we'll go on. We'll just get them down here, but, you know, I, I'm not really, I don't know anything about DUCO, all I know is they're on there, and they're there when you need them. You need fuel, they're there.
The reason we go out for bid is to get the lowest.
I understand that, but, you know, if we can't do the work, the taxpayer's gonna suffer.
The law just requires, because we do spend over sixty thousand.
Well, future reference, we do the bids next year, when you put that on there. But the delivery.
I thought we had a two-day delivery requirement in that bid.
It's just been gentleman's green, DUCO. They, they pretty well guarantee it.
I think you're right.
A lot of times it's the next day, that's pretty well guaranteed, that they're gonna have it here in two days.
We have the, the fuel capacity tanks, and that it has to, um, it's limited to a tandem axle vehicle. But we don't have a day delivery, not, you know, in the trunk. We do on some of the road and bridge, but we don't. We like enough to be sure you have that.
Yeah, I'll put that in there for next year.
So y'all wanna have to say two days, two day, two day turnaround for fuel and gasoline delivery, or?
Yeah, I mean, a maximum, yeah.
Yeah. That's two business days, correct?
Yeah, I mean, DUCO's bought it that afternoon, and I've messed up before, you know. I, I'm out of gas, and, and we didn't realize it, and they brought us on that day.
Yeah.
But it's kind of, if they're scheduled, if they can, they, they've been overbacked, but they might not be able to, they sure do.
And this often put in here, they wanna monitor our tanks, or optimal keep full schedule, how do they claim to monitor the tank?
I just saw a lot of that, that they said. And they did, and on the house, to jot down the. I'm gonna brush off one dance or less. Well, um, on the first rock, we do have a new bidder for infraplayer app, and he, he actually was low bid to precinct two and three. So our question, do y'all want to split that bid? Cause you're, here's the, here's the low though, okay, don't be backing low, because it does have a forbidden on awarding, uh, it said in determining the lowest and best bid for a contract for the purchase of road construction material, the Commissioner's Court may consider the pickup and delivery locations of the bidders spending costs to the county of delivering or hauling material with the car. The Commissioner's Court may award a contract for the purchase of road construction materials in more than one bid. If each of the selected bidders submits the lowest invested for particular location of time. So as right now, I'm requesting one or less, um, woodroom construction would have precinct one, four, and then county five. And then the four infrastructure would have, um, precinct two and three. Do y'all wanna leave it like that, or?
I, I think we, we need, we have to. That's the low bid for us, so we ain't gotta leave it like that.
I, I mean, it doesn't matter to me, because I'm not gonna buy any rock from any rock, the only thing Woodrum or, uh, 4M will do for me is haul only. They charge all the rock to me, because I can buy the rockkeeper a new king, so it's stupid for me. Buy rock from me, and when I buy, so when, when, in the past, when I hire Woodrum, he's billing me only for freight, for his trucks coming off. And he doesn't bill me for the rock, but I think there's a haul only rate in here somewhere.
Yeah.
Uh, so that's the only thing that pertains, which should only pertain, should pertain to all of us, none of us should buy rock. From them, when we can buy cheaper than I can.
Leave that in there, it was, uh, the fresh rock, one or one, three quarter inch, we did the flex base and stay base on the bids this year.
That's clear.
So, um, on the flex base, um, Woodrum has, um, precinct four and county five. And then on the flex base, um, 4M would have precinct one, two, and three.
What's, um, still, oh, we're still on crush rock? What's, um, still, oh, we're still on crush rock?
One and three.
One and three.
Four.
That, that's what we use, that's what we buy.
Yeah.
And then the undelivered, as you was talking about Keith, is, uh, ours is all cost twenty and twenty four. And then in the state phase, Woodrum would have precinct four and county wide, and then four M would have one, two, and three.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I wouldn't come up with that when it's. The father's county away, he's a cheap, I mean, the father's precinct away. He's cheaper than he is to the precincts that are close to me. I don't know where he came up with.
Okay, so that's how that award. Um. Fresh rock, three inch, or the four inch or less, Woodrum won all of those. And it's spring out of pleasure, they noted on everything.
Woodrum got it earlier?
Yes. For the haul only. Um. It looks like the four inch truck and trailer and equipment got this one for haul only. But I think this is one we've run into issue where people are not getting it necessarily, some training materials in those points, is that correct or am I all tractors?
Does, does this say where it's coming from?
Yeah, it's, it's in the bid specs, it's training the materials in those points. So that, that's where you're talking, the twenty dollars is undelivered and add nine dollars. Is cheaper.
That's right.
Getting it delivered.
Yes, ma'am.
By a car, not truck.
Yes, and then, and that, that's what I do when I use, and the rock charges to me. And, uh. And, and then, and, or to the precinct, and then, then the truck charges me for the, for the haul. So, so if you add it together, it'd be twenty nine dollars, and that's cheaper than all them others back there.
But it is from the Trinity Materials then, and maybe it was last year, the, 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 that, that location. And then the situation on the thing.
Well, Trinity Materials, that's our cost. That's, uh.
Maybe they did a location, they were very. Okay, I just wanted to mention that in front of the.
You'll be calling him for the, to make a delivery. Who's the guy that you?
It's gonna be, it's gonna be four M now, I used to call Brian.
Right, okay.
Brian had the cheapest haul rate. Uh. Matter of fact, it wasn't him on the bid, Brian has been giving us a day rate, if you use them all day long, that's way cheaper than the by ton rate. And, and that's not him on the bid, that's just, well, he was doing that on his own. If we used them all day long. He, he, he said, I don't care if a haul, one ton or a thousand tons, if you keep me all day long, here's what, here's what the price is.
Under a lot of contracts.
Training materials, who you buy your, the, the?
That's our cost, Trinity Materials, our cost is same. Our cost has bought out Trinity Materials. It used to be Trinity too.
So we're doing, like you're right here, but for me, it's fifteen oh seven a ton for the rock, that's haul, the rock. You need ten dollars to haul it?
Hey, that haul only there, that's the, that's, that's your price.
That's what they're gonna charge you just to haul it.
They're gonna charge you for the price.
Yeah, she's. How much is it per ton for the rock?
That's, we got, it's twenty, it's our, it's our cost.
Twenty is flex base and twenty four is shake base.
Went up four dollars a ton from that two. If we were paying sixteen, if I'm correct. You did, so you gotta go back over there to look up their delivery, their, their total, right, thirty, thirty six, thirty five, it's all more than twenty nine, so you need that crushed concrete.
So I could get it for ten, I could get it for twenty six.
Oh, yeah, there it is.
Yeah, okay, twenty dollars, this is for the.
Road hall?
Road hall, we did it. Baysa and Bron and, Bron and Ron. And we, uh, no question this morning that I said, so. And that their owner was going to, um, honor their bids.
They would.
If I tracked to buy, I haven't gotten anything from that. It's just the first. That, that's. No, you did a Baysa, because it's, what is that, all bolted, correct?
The, the crew down the Baysa versus plenty roll out of Brian and Brown.
They found different. Yeah. They didn't actually get any bids for all, or if I'm wrong. Uh, we're looking for, we got, we're going to order.
So we're going with Baysa, when, if we, I mean, the new company, when they.
If we get a letter from.
Yes.
They have that since the. And we'll do Bron and Ron, we'll do both. Okay, uh, so we're on. The people I watched three days. So, uh, it was called Woodroom Construction has precinct one, three, four, and county wide. And then the four inch truck and trailer is gonna have precinct two. And the market is gonna have, um, the undelivered. Everybody doing that. Then we go to the eight, one, they have various raw material. Texas material. But it's in a big like, seemingly they didn't deliver any products to make the limits, it's all undelivered. And y'all get a lot of materials from Texas materials as far as your ASPPM, your SSM. They didn't even have to deliver a product. You'll have to take it all, uh, you have to.
Well, uh. Like I told you, uh, Luke asked us about the bid, and I said, we ain't worried of the bid yet, we're opening them. And I said, but I can't talk to you, I said, but, but you didn't bid the proper deal, you bid straight by the iron, our freight's supposed to be bid by the ton. And he, he said, well, we'll come back and break that, well, he said, we messed up on that, but there's gonna be a, a minimum tonnage. I said, Luke, I don't know, we gotta figure this out, we gotta go out, I said, this material's not no good to us, we can't get it. We, we don't have the equipment, I mean, yeah, I can go get one or two loads, but if we get ready to overlay it, a road, we gotta have it delivered. You know, uh, we don't have that many trucks. So, I don't know what we do, Sam, you're gonna have to give us.
And they had minimal orders, you know, as far as, it was like, on the old sand, you have to have a hundred of the tons.
It says haul rate C attached.
It's the next page, and if you're going, we have a four hour minimum, this is one of the burning out of the power. Instead of involving time. If they can't come in and change our bid spec, we did do that, rubbing it forward. We had to be able to come in and change early spec and haul.
Yeah.
Offer me the bucks.
No, it's. That's right.
Hey. You tell me, they have to be on these bid specs and. And the only thing you can do is to reject these bids and then back out. If you're not happy with. How they do.
Well, I wouldn't wanna do, the only thing I'd wanna bid back out is the haul rate. You don't wanna reject these bids because now.
This, this part of it.
Well, I, but I mean, I understand Sandy, but, I, I mean, it's, it's public knowledge now, uh. If you bid them back out, then one, uh, Andy knows what Brandon bid. And so his next bid is what I'll, I'll get under him now, so I wouldn't wanna, I wouldn't wanna mess with the price of material, I don't think that'd be fair. But there's gotta be some way that we can let Texas bid, bid come back in and give us just the haul rate. And by ton, they gave us a haul rate by the iron.
But these haven't actually went to the haul. These bids.
They haven't, but we're live TV right now. Or what, we're on, we're, we're streaming.
But they're available for the public if they ask for them.
They were available that we got to.
That's right, that's right.
If I wanted to talk, we would talk.
That's right. And, and they can.
I got a really close meeting.
And they could get a copy if, if they needed it.
But we're gonna have to bid out the whole period of the two days. Well, they could reject the, uh, hot, the hot mix, SSM, ASPPM, the ones. But you could reject that.
Well, can, can we reject Texas bids? Hourly deal and tell them to come back and give us a ton bid on haul only.
There's nothing to, to reject on our bid, because that wasn't bid out.
Yeah, that's right, that wasn't bid out.
Wasn't bid out. He should have bid delivered.
Yeah, I mean, like you said, change our bid policies, I mean, they just need to give us the undelivered and delivered price, that's what they need. Not this, or whatever this.
Well, he did, he gave it to us, but it's, it's, the delivery part of it is, like Wood County. You can take the undelivered price and subtract it from the delivered price, and you know, that's the haul rate. That's how much they're charging you a ton to haul.
But that wasn't, that wasn't what I did shoot and asked for. But Texas bid. Did not follow the.
That's right. That's right. So how do we fix it without rebidding the material? I don't wanna, I don't wanna rebid the undelivered material because I, I like it. Uh, and I don't want it to go up.
Can't rebid the material, but we gotta know. I don't know how they do it, if they can see it.
I mean, you can, I, we can rebid delivered, if you wanna reject delivered prices.
We can reject delivered prices and rebid, now, the old saying, no, because you've got other bidders that do it wrong.
We got, on everything except for SSM and ASPPM. And it's.
Texas material. They, the old saying, that hot they next, well. I don't know, we've never ran into this problem. Yeah.
But if this is not out in public yet, they can still give us the delivered price.
But I mean, people did get problems that day when we.
Oh, so they do.
Certain people wanted certain things.
Well, even if we, people, if we ask them for delivered price, they can, they can manipulate it. If they, if they see this. They can see this, for example, delivered for, um. Ben Wheeler, a hundred and ten dollars, well, uh, we'll deliver it to Ben Wheeler for a hundred and seven dollars. They, they can say that, they got these numbers, so how could it be valid? They would have to destroy themselves.
That's, that's.
And we got a problem on the old sand. Because D and M is the lowest.
Y'all always bid to them because it's like.
Yeah.
And they need to level, they need it, even more to Wood County or whatever, you following the, we got, we need to, we want to pay.
Okay.
On the old thing now, on the old thing.
And D and M, it didn't say it this year, I remember it said it last year, it'll be certain percentage of water.
Yeah, they have.
There's a quality, the grade is not as good as, as, uh.
Generally, they have certain percentage of grades put on there, and they put that on their bid sheet this year, but I don't know why, but.
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't know what this means. You don't know what makes, the, the, the next page over for it says that what they're gonna charge, full load charge. For tandem, uh, a hundred twenty five dollar trailer, I don't know what that's, is it for twenty three tons, a hundred twenty five dollars? An hour.
Yeah, what's this USSG?
That's an hour. Huh? Yeah, I, I don't know.
It's a hundred twenty five dollars in an hour, or it's a hundred twenty five dollars a load?
That's not sure, it's a hundred twenty five dollar an hour. For the time of that truck.
But this has nothing to do with our bid. That's not what we asked for in our bid.
Wow, and if he, if he, if that's an hourly price, he goes from Terrell to Will's Point, that's an hour. And then back, that's, no, that's, we're just paid two hundred fifty bucks, delivered. Correct?
That's right.
Or one load.
That's right. That's right, but if, but if you multiply twenty five tons, by time it's eighteen, how much is that? That's four hundred and fifty dollars you pay for one load.
Right.
And there's a man, and there's a minimum of four hours, so if you only, if you only, if it only takes them two hours to deliver it, they're gonna charge you that hundred and twenty dollars for four hours. But like Sandy said, it don't make a bit of difference because it.
You need to bid.
You're saying, really, all we can do is, these, I don't see ever Texas bid was the only one to bid. We can put back out for delivered price numbers.
On the SSM. The ASPPM, the CPR four.
That's it.
And, yeah, that's it. And, you know, what we. For other, rest of it, you're gonna have to work it.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna work on both, I guess.
You'll award on the old sand, the Wood County asphalt and D and M contract. And then I. Hot mix.
It don't matter. I mean. Then you go back into that. Delivery cross, I mean, you, you gotta get, you gotta get that type beat in Wood County, my opinion. Because number one, we don't have really a quote direct cross, and number two, they didn't follow the bid rules. That's what I think.
Well, their undeliverance follow on.
The undeliverance, but delivered isn't.
Yeah.
And. I know all mine's delivered. It's way too far to go, I don't have, they couldn't go that far.
So you're, you're gonna have to come from Wood County asphalt or D and M contract.
Right.
D and M contractors, they, it's not hot.
It's not hot, so.
So you can't.
That's why we want it to be.
Yeah.
But I don't have a choice, I, I've got to go with Wood.
Texas has been my best.
Don't get in trouble with Wood County, Merschel, give me any bond.
Yeah, hold up, big one.
So, um, do you wanna reject the bids on SSM, A and ASPPM and regular?
Yes.
And the CPR or she, there, if you have a.
Just, uh, just the, um, delivered. Rejecting the liver, not the undelivered. Can we do that?
Want to keep the, you wanna just reject that delivered?
Yes, right.
I'll let them know for next year, they're gonna put undelivered and delivered price on there, this thing don't work.
Well, we can measure that to this, yeah.
Well, they put a delivered price, they knew it the way it was.
Yeah, the way it's supposed to be, the way it's supposed to be.
They did it by iron, they set it by ton.
Old banks have a different, it's not on that rush stock.
Yeah, they're way in the meeting, well.
What?
They're way higher on against delivered than they are.
The undelivered is ten dollars.
Delivered, they're way up there. Where are they at? Where's vocal construction at?
Where they located at?
Oh, they're out of Santa Tom, that's, that's a fan, that's a fantastic product. Uh, that's a.
Yeah, it's in Santa Tom.
Uh, that's, that's a product that's natural. Comes naturally out of the ground. Comes naturally out of the ground. Takes a lot, lots of lot up here, but they, they rail it in.
Yeah.
They get it by rail. And it's a fantastic product. I just wish it was closer. Uh, it, it's great, but.
Is that that limestone that's got the high asphalt content in it?
Yes.
Yeah, it is a great product. They used to bring it by rail to Santa Tom.
Somebody needs to invest in a plant up here.
Well, it's not here. It's, it's, it's a. Yeah, it's special that far the country.
Okay, so there were there, there's a one or we had received. Their one to fourteen gauge. And then, um, there is your, um. I gave y'all all a sheet that had updated, um, fourteen, so we're gonna deliver profit down. If you don't remember that one.
I've got a question on this. I've got somebody that makes a culvert, a half a mile from my barn. And I don't know, it was last spring. Uh, I'm just gonna fix tissue the process, but say I'm gonna get a, a twenty foot culvert. Um. Wolf pop was like a thousand dollars, and I could have it right now. Wilson cover culverts was like nineteen, it was a six hundred and Saint Cloud our difference, I remember that. And I could have it in two weeks. It's like, what? I'm spending seven hundred more dollars. And I'm having to wait two more weeks when I can get it right here. So I went to the culvert company. I was like, um, I went to Steve. I was like, Steve, won't you bid on this? And he goes, I would. He goes, it goes, this goes back with the gas. He goes, but I could bid this culvert. At this amount of dollars, what if steel goes up? I have to, and I've got this certain bid in here. I'll be losing money if it still goes up. And so he goes, I don't wanna bid it because, you know, we don't know those fluctuations. But then I found out, that's how it is with the gas. How can it can't be like that with the culverts?
As far as certain delivery day?
No, as far as, uh, he puts in a price for say a thousand dollars for a culvert. That's what it is. That's what steel is right now. And he gives me a markup of point oh six. And then steel goes up. Well, now that culvert becomes twelve hundred dollars, but the markup is still point oh six, just like the fuel. Because I could, I mean, I'm saving, that could save a ton of money on culverts for me. Probably for everybody, because it's right here in this county.
Well, or you, you could already just like, I know in the past, you know, if it stipulates it in the, the bid specs, that has to be so many days. And the current winner cannot honor that, then you have to get the, um, send an email to Egan. Then they can, they can have it in so many days, and that allows you to be prepared to someone else to get it.
Why couldn't we just put in a markup price? On culverts like we did the film.
Ben Wheeler did.
Yeah, it's right there in Ben Wheeler.
They only make a, uh, sixteen gauge. They don't make a fourteen or twelve.
Okay.
And when we had that place a while back, they got into that where they was having to spend more to make it than they could sell it to us. The way that worked out was they didn't have one available for us to pick up.
Come up. Wolf pop didn't?
We had to go out, and then they opened us up to go out to another vendor, and we had to pay more.
I just had that one instant. I needed it. They had it right there in the yard.
If you have an emergency, you can get it. If you got, you know, you gotta wash out or something to cave in, you gotta have a culvert immediately. You go, go to Ben Wheeler if they have it.
You have to have a, you need, you have to have a letter from the other vendor saying they can't bring it to you, really. The one that has to give the one that, the vendor can sue you for not.
You gotta try first.
Yeah. Yeah, can you, I mean.
Yeah.
That was like with the S and S, when we got to the crushed concrete, we'd get an email that they couldn't provide it in a reasonable time, then we could go outside and bid.
That has to be attached to the numbers. Something like that, I'm still have P O, I have key, and I'm like, no, you know, it's on the current winner. I have to have an email, because we're not gonna remember, oh, why we worked through somebody else, and that winning bidder could come in and say, hey, why didn't you do that to me? So we have to have a approval from them and for us, saying why we're getting five from them. And we also have in the bid packet, a change order, which, which from search, she has utilized before. And when we're, when the prices. Increase so much, they came in to the court and what he can. And the fourth approved, they're being praised. The story, the person wanted to go ahead and get it.
So that would answer your question. All these guys come back.
Instead of kind of the bid specs, they can petition for people to land a table, come with the money here, you know, and hold on.
Yeah.
But the only problem, we've never had one come back to us when things went down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, you.
Now, this year, you know, like, Jack, you have some, y'all been longer to do processes for that product than that. So.
Yeah, that did. It did go down to thirty dollars.
All of your steel culverts changed to contact engineer solutions.
Where they from?
And interviewed.
Oh, it is?
And they weren't here, but in that. Yeah, but then the, in the fourteen, looking at fourteen, now it has to be delivered within five working days under the bid spec, so. That's what the current bid spec is saying now. So that change will maybe let me know the initiation of the future, but that is within five business days or working days. Margins, these are with them too.
We've had contact before.
We have had contact.
Yes. About the two days they were on the emergency.
So do we have to get? Can we get them off there? Do we have to get the twenty-four inches from Wilson?
Twenty-four inch and lower, we don't wanna work that.
I remember speaking to one company at one time. I just didn't know if we had to do that since it was cheaper. Yeah. I didn't know if they just had to do that or what.
Yeah, they asked us on the under the word.
What if we need a twelve gauge? Can we go out for bids on that?
Twelve gauge?
Yes.
You don't grow over fifty thousand?
Yeah.
You can buy that working.
Okay.
Say that again.
A twelve gauge would not bid.
Right.
So you could go and buy a twelve gauge from each vendor as long as you don't grow over fifty thousand per car.
So if I wanted a twelve gauge for Wolf Pop right there, I could just.
If they'll make it, that's your thing, they won't.
If they make it.
Yeah.
You can't get it. Yeah, I don't know what to put that. Okay, sixteen gauge is gonna be on that as well, so instead of A C silver, um. A C five, and there's a new, uh, visitor this year that I could run. Well, that, that would be more than hitting, have a load of it together. Um, except the X three thousand, it has a, I don't know if they did it on purpose. But they did not put in a P O for the M C three thousand P gravel for putting it down, so I don't know what the.
Yeah, bar none wanted to cross the board. We'll see.
Except that.
That's gotta be a, that's gotta be a mistake.
I feel like they, yeah. I don't know, though. I mean, that's kind of assuming for all of us, but. I don't know if you ever use an M C three thousand baby train? On that P gravel, I don't have that.
It's a different oil.
Yeah, I see where you're at now.
Bar none got that too. So.
Yeah, they got the A C ten, A C five, and M C three thousand. I would like to ask one here. Um, why is it on the chip rock area of it? We don't have county wide as an option, maybe on P gravel. That's just having the sheet of all these things that they have. So she county wide also be on the chip rock end of it?
You know, I really don't know what that means.
I don't either.
Where's that at?
Um, there's only a county wide option on all the A C five or C ten, the M C three thousand. There's only a county wide bid option under the P gravel section, and I didn't know that it's gonna be like that, or. To be on the chip rock side as well.
I don't even think we use that chip rock. We use that P gravel and silk coat.
That's, that's a chip rock used to be coated. You know, it was some sort of coated rock with some sort of asphalt or something.
So if we're gonna do silk coating this year, we're gonna deal with bar none?
Bar none?
I, I, Nicole, to answer your question, I don't know. It's, it's, it's like. In my mind, it's like we could go individual precincts on each one of these bids. But then if we go countywide with one guy, it's his price, but it's, you would think if they did that, they would lower their price down to at least. You know, hey, I'll go to the one for this much, and two this much, and three this much, but if I get all of them, I'll do them all for this lesser amount.
Well, and I didn't know what they did, like, and maybe we just take a look at our bid sheets, and it was like, some of it was just silk over, not even bringing to your barn, so. That's why I'm wondering countywide if they can offer those maybe, because it's that sort of difference to the road, huh?
Yeah, they could all go to the road. It's a road.
And I said, well, I'm on the rock, and so I guess. Otherwise.
Yeah, it's gotta be.
But.
On the, on the silk coat, they take it to the road. If they do the silver coating on that road.
I bet you for a moment on all of it, not saying. Like, am I wrong?
On every bid sheet, right?
Because.
I'm afraid it's confusing it with the vendors, because they can.
But I let me ask you this, since I did get a deal, I was one bid on the silk coat, because of countywide price, they were applying.
It's the same price as all the other everything.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, emotions, I don't know anything about this, so. There's some attachment, some notes there of each of those people for them. Wow, now the day we all lose, do you?
I don't.
Chad's the only one who's gotten emotional.
I think I saw it one time.
We just getting ready to start trying to use this, um, we gonna start learning, figuring it out. We're gonna try to do a room chips if we can, or some fogs at least.
So what do you, do you?
Yeah, we do.
I don't know how, I don't know how to raise the emotion to know who's. This Cleveland asphalt broken down to five thousand, or five thousand, four thousand, you know, like that, doesn't do that, just gallon price period. But then have some kind of a fact, because now I highlighted on the pages what the notes were.
Where is this, uh? Ergon, where's your air?
Oh.
Like we went to, I think we went to Pittsburgh or someone did it. That'd be Chad. Used to only be Br- uh, Brandon, but Chad bought Brandon's.
I want no part of that sheet.
All right, hot mix for the future, it's like Texas, I don't remember the asphalt, one all of those.
What, is that what you use to?
Yes, sir.
Where they put it down for that?
Yes, sir. Now, that's just labor. That's not, I buy them the same thing. That's, that's just labor.
Yeah, you buy, you buy it and.
I, I pay for the material, and they, they just turn labor.
On all three options?
Yeah.
Okay, um, recycle fresh concrete, one and three quarters should be the next thing. And we've forgotten that, and recycle fresh concrete, one and a quarter, and that is split up. Um, most of our water got percent one, three, and four. And then, um, Big City got percent two and all under. Okay, so with that.
Yeah, I just gotta go with Big City.
And then that very bottom ones, we thought were fresh asphalt, which we don't ask for, so I don't know that they're selling.
Yeah, a company from Athens and a company from Canton or Edgeworth, and the one from Dallas, Winston.
We've had, we have had Big City win all, uh, before. A couple years ago, yeah, I mean.
That was when I purchased it, I think, so. Um, the last two was on the new product, we put in the, um, y'all, and then it's on, uh. About like the middle of the year for that recycled asphalt shingle breaker stuff. Um, a couple of y'all asked where they have a deliberate and an undelivered option. The delivered option is per mile, and the undelivered is per yard. And we have one person.
How do you lay that? Just like asphalt?
The blade machine. Well, you can, you can break, you can blade it.
That's why we got him to do that per yard process from when we're blading in, rolling.
Now, there's a, Sandy, there's a, they are. I get it. It's his option to lower this price if he wants to, right, because you're, uh. Yeah, certified recycling and myself, but we've, we've got a handshake agreement on, on four miles of road. That we're gonna do this summer, that's less than his price. And, but that's, that's, that's okay.
No, they're aware of you. He chooses to know a little price to you, that's fine.
You're doing four miles.
Can't go to somebody else.
Yeah.
Another big third one.
So if another vendor has a higher price and, and he can't call and say, well, I'll, I'll give it to you for this, lower. If he didn't win the bid.
He didn't win the bid?
Right.
No, he's talking about somebody.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm just saying, if, if somebody that didn't win the bid, that they decided to lower their price, you couldn't do it.
Because we do bid, we're not proposing.
Yeah, we award a contract for that bid. So somebody's gonna be awarded. We had somebody call this morning, and we turned in a bid.
But I mean, if it's not lower or the same as the bid, awarded bid.
You have to go with the bidder.
Yeah.
Somebody just can't come in and say, well, I'll show you my rocks in this amount now. That's not, you can't do that. You have to go with the one that's been awarded. So who was gonna get in contact with all that and do codes around the port? And yeah, I think the only other thing was Chad, we're gonna have us know one of them often. And then we're gonna regulate the delivering for. For. For the lower. No more things. There's been many exceptions.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Are we good, guys?
Yeah, sir.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Sir.
Got one from Commissioner Pearson, I got a second from Commissioner Barton, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
If we are adjourned.
It's not cooking, it's still, uh, I don't know what you did.
If they.
I mean, every, we can't get ahead.
Sorry for all the trouble you gotta go through on me.
Hey.
No, no.
We'll figure it out.
Thanks, get ahead.
Thank you, little master.
Yeah. Yeah, I think.
They do good, probably do.
Yeah. But we got to, who's gonna set up that meeting with, uh, the judges, I mean.
Judges, that he was.
Okay.
Judges, the constables?
Yeah.
They've been working on that already.
Yeah.
The AP Flare have been working on that, the constable.
That's good, we got, we gotta do something.
I'm surprised, I'm surprised that the, that is in the fire march, all that don't have that set, that set up the objection disposition.
They should, I mean, they, they should.
I mean, we had it back in the seventies and eighties when I was.
I agree, they.
Huh?
They can't get it in.
Not subtle, but they can pull up, they can pull up the records to look at the disposition, I said, I.
Since we all know we do from software companies.
It's ridiculous.
So we were on one software.
Yep.
Right.
We've got to, you gotta look into it.
Can't see, they. The jail can't see, the J D system. People calling here.
I'll be gone.